Planning Commission for August 20th, 21st? 21st, excuse me, 2019 at 6:01 PM. Sherri, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioner Powers.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Lattis.
Here.
Great, we have a quorum. And Commissioner Nolan, if you would lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next thing on the agenda is public communications, but I don't see any publics. So I think we'll move on past that this evening. And if someone comes in late and wishes to speak, we'll discuss it then. Next on the agenda is our consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, August 7th, 2019, with the recommendation from staff of approval. And I didn't get the chance to send you a note, Sherri, but it looked perfect to me. Does anyone have any adds or changes?
Possibly, but a question. Under public communication, did Elizabeth, Pep and Silva, was she asking us to consider updating the animal ordinance? Was that her ask, or was it simply making us aware?
No, she was making us aware, I think, of the riding lessons and extensive horse manure in an adjoining property.
Yeah, and the lack of an ordinance.
And the lack of an ordinance.
She wanted to bring to everyone's attention that we lack an ordinance. And then I had mentioned afterwards that it's on my personal list to bring back as well.
So that was just, if that was worded correctly, was she asking us to consider, asking us, the Planning Commission, to consider updating the animal ordinance? Was that her ask, or was it?
That was kind of an ask. She'd like to see something done because she sees a problem in her neighborhood.
Okay, so it is through us that that would occur?
It would be if the city council is of a mind to have us do that.
Okay.
Yeah, kind of my plan, my plan for now is to bring a, just kind of a recommendation that we bring it to the Planning Commission, and then once council approves that, then it would come to the Planning Commission.
Okay, great, thanks for clarifying.
Terrific. Any other adds or changes? I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Second that. I'll second that.
Was there a motion?
No.
Oh, I thought you just did.
I'll entertain a motion.
Oh.
The chair is not supposed to make motions in general.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the Ohio Planning Commission from on August 7th, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? Then let's have a roll call, Sherri.
Powers?
Yes.
Corbin?
Abstain.
Nolan?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Lattis?
Yes.
Terrific. Four zero, and we move on to the discussion item number two, Title X cleanup update and discussion item on design review permits versus conditional use permits. So let's do the first one first. James?
Thank you. And you know, I didn't do this last time, you know, for the record and for the public, so I'll do it this time. This is Alex's second meeting in a row with us, but I wanted to make sure to mention that we have Alex from the city attorney's office with us here today.
Right, welcome, Alex.
And he will be helping us through the discussion as well. But this item is intended to serve two purposes. One, I think, a very quick, simple purpose. The other will be more of a discussion. But the first is just an update on the Title X cleanup process. As I think you all are aware, we've been talking about this for about a year now, maybe even a little bit longer. And so we wanted to really prioritize that process and starting, getting some cleanup going on the process. So it came up at the end of the last meeting, and we said that we would talk about it at a future meeting when it was agendized, but, so we wanted to put it on. But the process that we are, I know it's mentioned in the report, but the process that we are rolling out as kind of a phase one, you know, to just kind of start getting through some of these big issues, is a process where our planner Suzanne is going to be meeting and has been meeting with Chair Quilisi weekly and going through some, you know, identifying major issues and identifying cleanup issues and, as mentioned in the report, removing unnecessary references, typographical errors, those types of things. So I think they had their third meeting this week, and I...
First meeting was with you, in fact, yes.
Yes, and I understand, making good progress. And so we're doing phase one. And then what I heard at the last meeting was that the commission was talking about some ideas or ways to also get involved. So we wrote this as we could talk about some other options as we move forward. The plan at this point was to do this phase one cleanup, bring it to the Planning Commission, you know, have the Planning Commission review it and give feedback, and then hopefully recommend it to council for a review. So that's the plan now, but if the Planning Commission has other, you know, ways that it would like to get involved, we can discuss those. And then I think that's the main thing. The second thing we'll talk about, if we can talk about after, maybe we talk about this item one.
Okay. I would just thank you very much. That's a good summary of where we're going. In addition, as we run across issues that look like they are policy questions, we'll keep those separate.
For later.
For later. And both the errata and the policy questions will come back to the Planning Commission to decide which, if any, of that material we wish to recommend to the city council for adoption. So let's move on to the second piece.
Okay. So the second piece of this discussion kind of stemmed, if I remember right, at the last meeting, we were kind of talking about Title X, and we started to talk about some of the projects in the past that have come to the Planning Commission multiple times. And I think there's been examples of like, you know, restaurants that had to come to get their outdoor dining approved, and then had to come and get, you know, alcohol sales approved, and they end up coming to the Planning Commission three or four times. And the other example that we talked about was the community center in the PL zone where they were, the permit before the Planning Commission was essentially a restructuring permit, but, you know, really the main focus of most of the issues was on whether that community center was appropriate for that zone.
And whether the use intended was actually that of a community center.
Yeah.
Which was hard to define.
So, yeah, so we talked about, you know, maybe we need to look at the design review permits and the conditional use permits to see, you know, if, are we using those appropriately? And specifically, I think one of the areas that draws, or that makes it challenging is under our design review permit, section 10-2.2003, section A, number four.
What page is that on?
I'm sorry, it's page two of 12. And so this is the section regarding design review permits. But the section, section four notes that a designer, you know, a design review permit, well, "The following proposed projects shall be subject to design permit review by the commission," and then section four says, "A change in use of an existing commercial or industrial building which will require additional parking," which essentially means in a way the design review permit is almost becoming like some sort of use permit. And I think that causes confusion and concern and, you know, makes it not so clear, are we talking about a design review permit or a CUP? And so what we wanted to do is kind of talk about that and talk about, one of the things we've looked at from other cities is other cities will have different types of reviews, such as a site plan review, where they actually look at the specific site and the specific use proposed for that site and determine if that's appropriate versus what we try to do is if it affects parking, it goes under a design review permit. And if, or if it's a, you know, a conditional use, it's not an allowed use, it goes under a conditional use permit, but there's a lot of confusion and gray area. So I think the last meeting, if I remember right, this was kind of raised by the Planning Commission, so we kind of wanted to allow for this discussion of this issue and hopefully be able to, you know, talk about it and answer some questions. But I guess that's like the main issue is, you know, how we feel about whether, how we're using the design review permit process, the conditional use permit process, and is there a need for some kind of other process?
The impression I have, and I may well be wrong, is that a particular applicant coming in to do something, have a particular use on a particular parcel, if it's in one of these tables and it says CUP, then they're going to come in asking for a CUP. But if it's not, or it falls under something special like it's a two-story residence, then they come in for a design review instead. But my impression is that if either one of them is approved by the Planning Commission, then they don't have to go back to anyone except to convince planning staff that they've checked off all the boxes and such, then they get a building permit. Is that right?
If it's approved by the Planning Commission, unless, yeah, if it's approved by a Planning Commission, then that's the approval, so.
Unless we disapprove it, then it can be appealed to the city council. I'm not sure, I'm not sure why there are two different processes, frankly, because we wind up with a lot of standard conditions on DRPs, and we sometimes add conditions of our own to those same DRPs, which makes them look more and more like CUPs. And so I'm, it's not clear to me why we have two different things.
So I have a question about that. So when we have the conditions of approval, what would be an example of a condition of approval that would be overlapping with a CUP? Did I understand you correct?
No, I'm saying, we put conditions on DRPs.
Correct.
And a CUP by its nature is already a conditioned use.
Right, but I don't know that we get into that, I don't believe, but I'm just saying from, and this is my opinion, that the conditions that we put onto a DRP overlap with a conditional use permit.
Some, somewhat, but the, but the design review is really supposed to be focused on the appearance of the structure.
Right.
Whereas a conditional use...
Assuming that it's an approved use already. Assuming that it's a P and one of the...
Yeah, so that's what I meant. I don't think that we crossed that line.
You're not really evaluating the use. If something's subject to a conditional use permit, you're evaluating the use.
Right.
For one thing, if it's existing retail and it's changing to something more intensive, you're able to actually evaluate that. Is that something that's appropriate for that particular site?
Right.
And are the, and you can also really look at the impacts of the use. And there are findings required for a conditional use permit that relate to impacts and also a general plan. And so the conditioning, I mean, the way the city's been doing it, they've kind of finagled the design review permit, and they do, and so that we have been putting conditions on it. But when you're looking at the use, the more efficient and appropriate planning tool is conditional use permit. You know, in other cities, they, so for example, if we made hotels...
Your mic's off.
No, your mic's off. Oh, I said it.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I set all that stuff off the mic, sorry.
I heard it.
You don't have to repeat it.
I could hear you, so.
So in a lot of cities, if there ends up being a dual process, both design review and conditional use permits, they can be piggybacked. They can be reviewed at the same meeting. And anyway, I'm just, I'm happy to see you bringing this up. But I'm just saying from, for clarity, with a conditional use permit, you can really, what you're looking at are, is the characteristic of the use, how it impacts the surrounding properties, how it impacts the community, and it's the way to go, particularly on some of these things, like a hotel coming into a commercial zone. I mean, my focus is more on the commercial zones and where we get some, we have potential use changes that really can affect the community character, and it affects, it can affect the balance of tourist-serving and resident-serving uses. And if we really want to protect our village and kind of maintain what's really good and strong and wonderful about it for the people who live here, a conditional use permit is really something I think we really seriously want to think about.
So then what it, I mean, what I'm hearing and what we've discussed before is that really the things that come under the classification of this, of design review permit really need to be looked at. And some of them need to be conditional use permits, and we have to think about what actually is appropriate for a design review permit.
I mean, I don't, we don't need to go overboard, but I think that particularly focusing on the commercial zones and kind of looking at things...
And usage, yeah, absolutely.
That can shift that balance from resident-serving use, I mean, we probably want to encourage resident-serving uses and don't, you know, we wouldn't want to put that extra layer on, but particularly things that can shift that balance, I think it's worth a look.
And then what came up in discussion before is that if some, if a business comes in under a conditional use permit, if a new owner comes in, they need to reapply for that conditional use permit. Is that?
No.
No, and that's actually one of the concerns I've heard raised with the CUP in Ohio, is somebody gets a CUP to do something, they sell, and the next person can come in and...
And do the same thing.
The CUP is attached to the parcel, not to the owner.
But the use, the use that the new owner would conduct needs to be, you know...
Yeah, it has to be congruent with the approved use, yes.
Because the approved use is actually described in the conditional use permit. So they would need to abide by that. They also need to abide by the conditions of the operating, of the use.
But they don't have to reapply.
Right.
And then...
Oh, and so if a use changes and they don't change the outside of the structure, then they would only need a conditional use permit. So you can separate those two things that way.
Well, that sounds pretty logical. I think that sounds good. And I have a question about number three.
Page number, please.
The same section we're on, page two of 12.
Okay.
Applicability, it's number three.
This is attachment B.
Right, and this has come up before two, when somebody adds a second story, and then no matter what they do ever again to that house, even if it's on a different part of the house that's only one story, they still need to come back for another design review as opposed to just getting a building permit. So if you've put a second story on one part of your house, and then on the back on the one-story piece, you want to change a window, technically you have to come back for a design review permit. That's what it sounded like.
I think it's anything that requires a building permit on that two-story home, then...
Second story element.
It doesn't say that.
Well, that's how we practice.
Then maybe, okay, so that, but maybe let...
Well, then, yeah, 10-2, 2003A3 maybe needs to be reworded.
So it's clear.
Yeah, I had a question mark on that one, too, just for clarity needed to be...
That was actually my understanding from the read of it, too, so we'll look at that.
That's, that's a section we haven't gotten to yet in our review.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
But I'm sure you'll make a note.
And I have a question.
Yeah.
And I'll, so I just wanted to comment that I really appreciate the way we're approaching the cleanup, and I really like that it's very focused on cleanup and, because it's really, it's easy to kind of flow into policy issues and, but I think, that's great. I'm very happy with that approach, and really glad that you're on the committee.
Yes, I'm helping Suzanne. And we've been meeting a couple hours a week. Because there's a lot of detail that you grind through. And some of the things that I find, she explains to me why they are the way they are, and fine, we scratch them out. That's not a recommended change. It's exactly the kind of collaboration that we ought to be having. And having two sets of eyes on everything really helps.
Right, very good.
Yeah, we're up to 10-2, 900, I think.
Oh, wow.
So.
You guys were faster without me in there.
But to get all the way through it, you have to get to 10-3600.
Yeah, that's true.
It's going to be a while.
Yeah.
But yeah, and like I say, we're trying to keep separate policy questions.
For later, second phase.
For, for a separate list of things for the, for the commission to consider. And I would recommend, if you have the time to read any of it, go read it and see if you see anything in there that doesn't make sense, like this.
Just a quick question. So tonight, I guess, and maybe for a while, if I'm understanding this correctly, we're going to, we're going to go through, we're going to look for any typos and any corrections, that type of thing, and then...
That's, that's what we're, that's what Suzanne and I are doing.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't, we're not technically having to do that.
So today was kind of just the overview of what we're doing and seeing if anybody had any, you know, thoughts or concerns.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then I just wanted to get some general feedback on this, and we can take that feedback and kind of, you know, come back with a recommendation on some changes to this, too. But yeah, we don't, we weren't expecting to, you know, rewrite the code tonight or anything.
No, I didn't think so. I thought you were just, okay, I just wanted to make sure I was on the right...
But yes, as an example, when the Inn was here last meeting, they were here for a DRP, as I recall.
Yes.
For that storage building. But we put conditions on it that had to do with potential replacement of trees that were damaged by running the sewer extension. And, and so it's not absolutely clear to me how different that, well, it's different in the sense that it's not a CUP that stays with the parcel, but doesn't a DRP stay with the parcel? So the long-term effect of both things seems to me is the same. It's just what, it's just what conditions wind up being on it. And when you...
Right, that was kind of my question earlier when you brought that up.
And you look at one of these tables, and sometimes it says P.
Permitted.
Right? But it doesn't define all the things that are permitted for that land use. Maybe they're all obvious in context. But then other places where it says CUP, I don't know, at least, what the conditions are.
Well, the conditions of approval are different from the conditional use permit. And that's what I was trying to ask when we first started.
Conditions of approval of a DRP you're talking about.
We would apply, we, so if something says a CUP, we would review the project.
I understand, yeah.
We would review their application for a conditional use permit for the use. We'd have a staff report, and then we would review it for potential impacts and any concerns we have, if we wanted to approve it, any concerns that we have about the operation or characteristic of the use, we would apply conditions...
I completely understand that.
To go to that CUP.
I think I misunderstood something Steve had said, and I was just trying to get clarity at the beginning. So it's fine. I completely understand the difference between the two.
And if we put conditions on a DRP, they're not necessarily conditions on the use, they could be conditions on other things.
Right.
Yeah. But it's not clear to me that we couldn't just have a conditioned building permit, or whatever you want to call it, that covers all of it. Because, as I say, it's not clear in here from the land use, community center. What does that mean? And what are the conditions in a CUP for a community center? I don't know.
They're whatever we would make it.
I'm not sure that they're all written down in here.
Well, no, they're not, they're not free...
Whatever staff recommends to us, and we decide to add.
Right, I mean, because, because it's individual, it's addressing the specific use, and there's no, I mean, after a while, you develop standard conditions, just like you do on the design review.
Hours, days.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we do have a lot of standard conditions that have to do with cultural resources and protection of the city in the case of lawsuits and stuff like that.
Trees and species.
Which we're all used to at this point.
Wayler play.
Yeah.
But it's discretionary, and the building permit is not discretionary, so if you went down the checklist and it complied, then, and I, you know, there's just a lot of, I think with some of these uses, like a hotel coming in, there would be, there would be a need for evaluation and a decision involving, you know, judgment on whether the use fits with the community.
Absolutely.
And even if someone comes in with a DRP, I think it's incumbent on us to decide if that project is really the land use that's listed in one of these tables that has a P. Because if it's not, then it probably falls under some other kind of use permit that we should be looking at perhaps in a different way.
Wouldn't that typically come in our staff report, too, with the find, you know, initially we need...
Yeah, with findings.
I would hope so.
I mean, it usually does.
Not, not all the land uses that you find, and there's table 2-2, 2-4, 2-6 at least, and I remember there's a 2-10, and there's probably a 2-8.
Well, so you're, okay.
They may not all be defined sufficiently for us to be able to judge whether, whether an individual project that comes into us as a DRP on a line that has Ps, is that really what the applicant is planning to do?
And that was the problem with the community center that we looked at.
That was certainly one, yeah.
Yeah, we've actually had a couple projects that were similar to that, where, you know, I can think of one that actually, there was only preliminary discussion on, so it hasn't gone anywhere. But I remember the, the issue we had was they wanted to be classified as a club. And I think it's a club, now I need to look again, but I think it's a club in the use list.
Yeah.
But, but it was open to the public, and I'm like, that's not a club, and they're like, but we think it is, and it's, and so right now, there's not really a real process to...
Restricted to people that come in the door.
Yeah, yeah, that's, they said the customers we have will be members of our club. And I'm like, well, isn't that like every store, you know, in the world? And so, but right now, we, one of the things we're talking about this is there's no process really, you know, what we end up doing is we put it through, you know, like with the DRP, and then we end up having the discussion here at Planning Commission of, do we really think this use is appropriate, kind of, like we did with the community center? But it's not, there's no like real process to actually really dig into that, yeah.
Yeah, this is good. I'm glad you're doing this.
While, while we're on the topic, and reading through this, as I did, I came across in table 2-2, this is attachment A, page two, under recreation, education, and public assembly uses, there's equestrian facility.
Right.
And it requires a CUP in, I guess, what are the larger...
Parcels, yeah.
Parcels in the residential areas. And I'm wondering, what's, well, first of all, I came across it, but I haven't had the chance to go back to 10-2, 3600 or 3602 and see if equestrian facility is even defined in the code. Maybe Alex, you could check that. It's going to be 3602A somewhere, or 3602E for equestrian. And, and I wonder, in addition, which residential zone does 805-Daily fall into? eight oh-five daily fall into?
So I don't think-
Because there are four of them where it's not an allowed use and the other five where it requires a CUP. And I certainly didn't get the impression that the place had a CUP.
Yeah. I don't think we should talk about that individual parcel.
Yeah. I'm saying that's just an example of things that we need to consider.
You're thinking like a code compliance officer now, so I like it.
Oh, okay. Oh, then.
Switching hands.
No, but I think the, the, I think it would be good to hear the definition. That is something we've talked about. And it's another good example of, somebody will come in and say, I have an equestrian facility, but it really doesn't meet what the definition is. And then, you know, it's just, we see more examples of like, because people come in and they look and they say, what category do I fall in?
Yes.
And it's a very, like, common sense reading of, oh, well, I'm a, you know, equestrian facility. And then you read the definition and you ask what they're doing and it's not the same thing.
It does, the words don't mean the same to them. Right.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Well, so the definition is, an equestrian facility is defined as a commercial horse, donkey, and mule facility, including horse ranches, boarding stables, riding schools and academies, horse exhibition facilities, pack stations, barns, stables, corrals, paddocks, accessory, and incidental to these uses.
Well, from that definition and the testimony that we had last time, it sounds like that's an equestrian facility.
Yeah. So the challenge, and I can't talk about any one case, but the challenge we see with, with complaints about equestrian facilities is proving that they are commercial is challenging. So-
Oh, that they're, that they're getting paid for giving riding lessons?
There's a couple other ways to prove commercial, but that would be the easiest way, you know. And so if somebody, again, not talking about anything in particular, but if, when people come in and say, I see somebody riding, you think, you can ride on, in an-
Be friends of the family.
Yeah, you can ride in an R oh-four, R oh-two, R oh-one, but you can't have a commercial facility.
Right.
Right.
Okay. So that's, that's a question to be decided by city staff as, as they move on. Okay?
The, the breakdown I see with that, and again, I, I understand we're not talking about that particular case, though we are talking about that particular case, is the onus is falling on the person making the complaint to show that versus the onus on the person owning the property to show that they're not a commercial equestrian.
That would be the-
And that's kind of a hiccup in the process.
Yeah. That would be the, the United States Constitution, though. It isn't until proven guilty.
And, and I think if, if a complaint is lodged in public like that, then, then the onus is on city staff to figure out the ground truth.
Yeah.
And that, that seems to me like a reasonable way to go.
Yeah. And so tying back into this, though, that was an issue we're seeing more and more is, is the, kind of the disconnect of, is this use actually, you know, yes, you know, restaurants are allowed, or hotels are allowed in the C one, but is this particular hotel a real fit for the C one district, or the, you know, the C one zone? So those are the kinds of questions.
As opposed to the VMU and Sunita or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioners, another thing to consider here is that the, while almost all conditional use permits are often accompanied by design review permits, a design review permit only picks up those commercial industrial buildings where additional parking is required. Now, if, if additional parking wasn't required, but there was still a question regarding the intensity of the use, you wouldn't have a design review permit. And so you might want some kind of discretionary or review there. And maybe it would be, that's an instance where it would be appropriate for this, for this different use permit that was being discussed earlier.
Good point.
So there may, so there may be other instances where neither the CUP nor the design review permit is picking up something that the planning commission would otherwise want to discuss.
Now, a few meetings ago, two, three, four meetings ago, something like that, we considered the big house in the ag land up on the hill. That was, that was a DRP, as I recall. And I'm trying to, oh, I was trying to understand why it was, but I think it was a two-story house. It was two-story. So that was the reason that we had a DRP?
Or was it the grading?
It was a concept review and it was a hillside development.
That's what it was.
There we go, yeah.
Okay.
Design review.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not sure how much progress we're making on the question here. Is it, should, should we have DRPs and Cups separate? Should there be a third category, as Alex just brought up? Or should either of these categories be broadened to cover so that everything has to go through one review or the other? Keeping in mind that Councilmember Haney brought up the last time he spoke with us, that we have to consider that having a design review or having a CUP review is both a, a time-consuming and an expensive affair for the applicant. And so I think we need to be judicious about, about how broadly we decide to force people to come before us.
Right.
I don't know what, I don't even remember now. It's somewhere in the fee schedule, I think, but it may be five hundred or a thousand dollars or something like that, that you have to put up to come before the planning commission. And so we need to be careful not to require that of everybody.
And Councilmembers?
Is it more than that? Ouch.
A design review permit?
Yeah, I don't-
You have to put up nineteen hundred dollars as a bond, you know.
We, yeah, we've done away with that, so I don't remember the number off the top of my head. We did away with the deposit.
You put it in an escrow account? Or you, you don't, you're saying you don't anymore?
Yeah, we've done away with that as, as, on, on the whole, that we don't do the, the escrow account method anymore. It's more pay-as-you-go. Yeah, it is pay-as-you-go, but I don't remember the fees off the top of my head. Four fifty for the design review permit? Is it four fifty plus the two twenty-five hourly? Yeah. So, yeah, realistically, probably a thousand dollars to, to, you know.
Yeah.
If, if you're well organized and you get everything in.
Yeah, I mean, and I agree. You know, I wouldn't want to go overboard, but in looking at these lists, again, I mean, my, my concern is more on the commercial zones and, and probably the industrial zones. And that's, so when those people, and I would favor anything that seems to be oriented to residence-serving use or that's low impact, you know, you look at it and you just go, oh, well, you know, that's really generally doesn't have things you would be concerned about. And so I, I would not want to see everything being switched over to a conditional use permit. And I, I mean, I agree, I agree with you. But on the other hand, if you have something that's coming in and it has impacts, potential impacts on the community, it's a cost of doing business of applying for a conditional use permit. And I just, I don't, you know, it's like, that's what it is, so.
Well?
Another thing that you may all want to consider is the findings. So the more findings required per permit, the greater the cost will be on the applicant. So if we were to, if we were, for example, to separate out a use permit from a design, design review permit, maybe one permit could focus just on design aspects, the other permit can focus on just use aspects. Instead of having one permit with lots of different findings, you can have two permits with lesser findings and only the relevant permit that the person needs, that the applicant needs, would be required.
That, that certainly seems like a way to make the, the process more efficient and less expensive for the applicant. But who decides whether, whether it's a use that needs to be conditioned or a design that needs to be conditioned or approved or disapproved? How do, how do we reach that point?
Well, to start with, there are the eligibility requirements for the permit. So you'd have to see what, because some, some of these aspects are, are tied to the use. Like, so for example, just looking here at ten to two thousand and three on attachment B, page two, number four, A four says, a change in the use of an existing commercial or industrial building which will require additional parking.
B, B, attachment B or D?
B, sorry. B, page two. The one, the one we were talking about earlier.
Okay.
Right.
So that's, so A four.
Attachment B, page two, set to A four.
A four.
Oh, okay.
Says, a change in the use of an existing commercial or industrial building will require additional parking. Now that's clearly, has nothing to do with design.
That's, that is, that is at least a quantifiable thing and we can, we can all agree whether more park, parking is required or not.
Right.
Under, under the, the code. I don't know. Mr. Vega, do you feel, do you feel like planning staff could take generalized applications and decide whether they're conditioned uses or, or design?
Or do you mean ministerial as opposed to?
Or ministerial. Well, yeah, the, the need for planning commission review of a DRP, the, the conditions that kick that off, like two-story residents or whatever, are, are narrow and probably pretty straightforward at this point, I think. Would you?
I think, like, that is what we do, unless I'm misunderstanding, but it's, you know, when people come in, they typically don't know if they need a DRP or CUP. They just come in and say, here's what I want to do. How do I do that? And so we typically-
We'll look through the land uses and see if we can agree on something.
Say, you're gonna need a CUP for that, or you're gonna need a DRP for that. So that is what we do. I think part of, and, and I do apologize, Suzanne had some really good examples of it. She, she couldn't be here. So, you know, if we want to brainstorm and then come back and, and talk with her, too. But she probably has a better example than I would of this. But the challenge has been, I think there's been a couple of times, and I don't have an example off the top of my head, where, you know, we did do a DRP and then the person, six months later, came back and had to get a CUP to, you know, to sell alcohol or whatever it is. And then it's, there's always just, just like tension or, you know, why couldn't I get both permits at the same time? Or, you know, this, that or the other.
Same release center, the hip, the B.
I think they came three times.
Yeah.
Outdoor, they, they came for their design review, outdoor dining, and alcohol sales three separate times. So I think that's kind of, like, what I hear from planning staff is like, it's hard, you know, they, they come in and say, here's what I want to do. Well, I want to design my building, design review. And then they come back and go, great, so now I can have outdoor dining. No, that's a separate permit. So that's the tension we have.
But maybe if there was a, a questionnaire. Okay, so you came in for a design review permit for, you know, change of use, and this is what your building's gonna look like, and are you gonna serve alcohol? And do you want to have entertainment at night? And what about all the other things? So that they, they know upfront what they need to do. I mean, it should be really clear.
Add lighting to it, because we know we've had people coming back, what about the lighting?
Yep.
What about signage? I think a lot of that already is on the permit, the application, though.
Signage is a separate permit, yeah.
It, it, if you go back, Sheri, I know, a lot of this is on the application. So-
Sometimes applicants aren't all that force coming either.
Maybe we go and see if we need to add something?
I was gonna say, so, I don't want to pick anybody out, but like, we were just mentioning a, a project. So, did they have an application? I'm not familiar. Did they have an application that said they were gonna sell alcohol? Or was that not, okay. Okay. So-
But did anybody ever ask? I mean, it's a restaurant, they're gonna-
We'd be down. We'd say, please put your outdoor dining on it, because we know you're gonna want it. We say, please put, if you're gonna serve alcohol in the VMU zone, because it's a louder commercial, so they don't have to worry about it there. Please put your lighting on there, because we know you're gonna want it.
Right.
We'd tell them, we'd ask them, we'd beg them.
So maybe it's just a checklist.
Checklist.
But you do have a checklist. I know you do, yeah. Right. And I've looked at them, too, and I, you know.
So, just, you know, there's, there's a lot going on with these.
I know.
They're like, oh, this is gonna be a hassle.
I know. I, I've worked on projects, too, where they make a big deal about it and then you ask them upfront, and they go, no, we're not gonna do that. Then they come back. I know.
But, but the, the purpose of what we're talking about is actually to go in and have staff look at these tables and, and propose changes that would come back to the commission, right? And then we talk about that.
Yeah.
So that it's clear whether something needs a CUP or not.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good way to move forward. And then if, if there is interest in maybe this third permit type, maybe that'd be something we could tie into that.
Yeah.
Maybe, Alex, you could talk about that again, that third permit type? I, I know you mentioned it and it, it kind of went right by. I didn't understand it.
Oh, sure. So, so this third permit type exists in, in some other cities. It's, so the design review permit, one of the reasons why it might be so expensive is because there are a number of findings that need to be made in order, and, and the staff needs to do a, review the design review permit to ensure compliance to a number of different standards articulated in both ten to two thousand and four and ten, yeah, ten to two thousand and four. There are a lot of standards that staff needs to review to make sure there's, there's compliance with the design review permit. So if you were to create, and a lot of them have to do with design, they have nothing to do with use. So if you were to create a separate permit, so James had referred to the site plan review that some cities have. I've heard it referred to as a use permit, just a general use permit as opposed to a conditional use permit. This permit could focus specifically on the use and whether that specific use is appropriate for that site. And it wouldn't have all the design require, it wouldn't have all the design standards that need to be cross-checked that staff would have to do. And so that would reduce both time and expense for the applicant if we're only focusing on the use as opposed to design as well.
Because, because a previous owner of the parcel was an applicant with a design review and that was approved?
Yeah. So if, now, I'm trying to think of an example here. If, if a design, let's say there's, they're changing something interior in a commercial structure and that's increasing the intensity, you may want to review that. But that wouldn't be caught in the design review. And that wouldn't necessarily be caught up in the CUP depending on what it is. So that's-
Because the words of the use are the same and they don't capture the intensity?
Because it wouldn't capture, because, well, first, it wouldn't, the design wouldn't be captured, because it's not an exterior alteration and it wouldn't maybe increase parking. So it wouldn't be caught up in the design review permit. And it might not be caught in a conditional use permit because it's not-
It's not a change in use.
It's not a change in use. It's like a continuation of use, but it's an increase in the intensity of the use.
So the only way to catch that right now is through the parking requirement.
Right. Yeah. You, you wouldn't, right. You wouldn't catch it otherwise. It's not something that would come before this body. But if you were to create an alternative permit structure, that might capture it also. For example, if you took out, I keep on, I go, I'm only going back to A four because it's just like the starkest example, but that one requiring commercial or industrial buildings that have additional parking. So if they didn't have to go through the entire design process, if they only had, if we only evaluated the additional parking issue to determine whether or not additional parking is appropriate for that specific site, and whether there'd be any conflict with, let's say, increased traffic or something like this, then I imagine that would also decrease the cost on the applicant.
It would seem like it would be a much briefer analysis.
Right.
Which would be cheaper for the applicant.
And then what about staff time also for doing all these separate permits? I mean, essentially, I think what you're saying is they would streamline it for staff also in addition to being less costly for the applicant? That's the goal?
Assuming, of course, that-
Yeah.
If, if this, you wouldn't have to get all three permits, right? So if-
Right, if you just came for the one thing, one item.
Yeah, if this permit replaced another permit, then I think it'd be streamlined. But now, they have to get three different permits, it might be as long or potentially longer.
Right, okay, yeah.
But if, if you're, if, if you're just changing the intensity of use, then the CUP already exists by definition.
For the design.
Well, if you're, yeah, so if you're going from retail to restaurant, that would, that could be caught by a CUP. But if a retail store is maybe going from just normal retail to like a hair salon or massage or something, then, then maybe that- hair salon or massage or something, then, then maybe that, maybe all those uses might be all Ps in here. But yet, it might need a, uh, an additional level of review because, okay. Yeah, I see, I see.
But both, both business office and massage are permitted uses in that zone?
It's the parking.
But the parking catches them. Yeah. Okay.
Based on this discussion, I think we can prepare some materials and come back to get an actual, you know, recommendation to move forward.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, you know, if, we, we can do that and, and come back at a future meeting.
Okay.
If that is the planning commission's desire.
That sounds fine to me. I, I would, I would ask, if you have the time, please, at least go through table two-two to four, to six, to eight, to ten. And just look at them in terms of, do these, do these things? And, and of course, each one of them, you have to say, okay, is that phrase campground or cemetery or whatever? Is that defined somewhere in the code? So that both staff and the applicant can look at the same words on a page somewhere and agree on what that means.
Yeah.
So ideally, everything that's in here should be, have a definition.
It should. It should. And then it should match up with the zoning map, for example. And, and, um, so.
So, you, are you implying that definitions don't currently exist? Or they exist, they may not?
Some, some of the definitions do not exist. For example, in table two-two and two-six, the phrase animal keeping is listed as a land use, but it's not defined anywhere. Equestrian facility is defined, but animal keeping is not. It could be any kind of animal presumably. But, but we don't know because there's nothing, there's nothing in the code right now. If you, if you wanted to keep, um, a pack of lions in your backyard, as long as you had tall fences, maybe the neighbors are safe. But is there a state law that says you shouldn't do that? I don't know. There's no, there's no local law that says you can't do that.
Yeah.
Uh, 'cause animal keeping is a pretty vague.
Animal keeping isn't or?
Chair, closely, yeah. It, it's defined as animal raising and keeping.
It's number ten.
So, I guess we should probably change it to say animal raising and keeping instead of animal keeping.
There, yeah, there are a lot of, of, uh.
It's in, it's inconsistent.
No-motor vehicle items. For example, auto sales is, occurs in one place and in another place it's called motor vehicle sales.
Yeah.
And those are not necessarily the same thing. We don't, we don't have an international harvester truck sales lot in town. And under one set of words, we could, and on the other one, nobody's gonna call a semi a car, an auto. Or, uh, and, and, and I would urge you to look for other inconsistencies that we might want to correct as we, as we go on. For example, table two-four, it says delicatessen is a permitted use in MPD, but alcohol is banned.
There's, there are actually a few-
You can have a delicatessen, but you can't sell beer at the delicatessen or wine.
I mean, for instance, I had one too. This was on page two of twelve. Under residential uses, it says, mobile home outside of a park. And it's only permitted in the R1, but I just, like, to me, I didn't know what that meant. I, but I need to go look it up.
You parked a mobile home on your parcel and you're living in it, I guess.
It says outside of a park.
Outside of a park. Outside of a mobile home park.
Oh, I see what it means. Okay, gotcha. I don't want to go into the, you know, take too much time, but.
A mobile home park is, is not allowed in the city at the moment.
I see what that means. Okay.
Yeah. The alcohol sales, the liquor stores and the delis, there's a lot of inconsistencies between those three too.
Yeah. Restaurant slash cafe has, is a permitted activity in the MPD. But outdoor dining and alcohol is not subject to a CUP. It's banned. On the other hand, I looked at the zoning map and, and I see M1. Maybe my, my color perception is not what it should be, but I couldn't find anything that was, that was colored MPD.
It's in the process. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I know the zoning map and several things that, that Suzanne and I have run across
Yeah.
are areas where staff is working on it right now. And so, we'll, we'll leave those alone until those come back separately.
We'll do a cleanup of those and particularly look at the ones we've discussed.
You, uh, Chair, you mentioned something in, in, uh, two-six?
Two-six, well, two-six has the animal keeping. Uh, you can do animal keeping in open space. Uh, is that, is that bee hives? Bees are animals.
There is beekeeping and it's permitted.
There it is. It's, oh, beekeeping is permitted, but animal keeping requires a CUP in open space.
So, you just, we just need definition clarity.
Yeah. That's, there's, there's a lot of missing clarity and that's. Yes. Yeah. I had a, a couple of things just, just hit me. And I know th- there was a case that we took up, the caravan outpost and their request to do alcohol onsite sales and the city council passed it. But I don't recall what use category this caravan outpost CUP falls under.
So, it's the one with?
It's in the M1 zone.
It was something.
Alcohol beverage sales onsite. It's, you'll see it on the table on page six, CUP with a seven.
That's right. It's the first line.
Yeah. Yeah. So, what we did is we put a footnote.
That was, that was a line that was added to the table as that case came through. Okay. Um, I was also curious, who holds the CUP for farmer's market? Because it's required. Is that, is that the city?
It's not the city, but they do have one. And I don't, I can never remember who it is. We can find out.
It's Cynthia Corman, but, yeah. I don't, she's been doing that for a long time and I don't even know if she pays anything to the city. She's been kinda given this grace period.
Continuing costs to hold it.
No, but I don't think that she pays anything back to the city. It's a bone of contention because A, she's not from Ojai. B, most of the vendors are not from Ojai and everybody thinks they're doing something great for Ojai and the money leaves town immediately.
People are from Ojai, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's.
Very, yeah. Yeah.
Not very many. And they don't stay.
I, and I think staff is working on the zoning map, but I don't know for sure. I found things like the Nordoff Cemetery is PL. The, the land is, is marked PL on the zoning map, but cemetery's not a permitted use in the PL zone.
Oh, I didn't catch that.
Things like that. So, um, and Nordoff High School is not PL. It looks like it's IR2 or IR1 or IR3. Where school and university is a permitted use, it just seemed odd to me that it, that it was not zoned the same.
We gotta move the cemetery.
So. Good luck with that. Yeah. But anyway, I, I, I would really urge you to, to look through these three or four tables and, and see what doesn't make sense to you. And, and that's what we should come back and, and try to clean up. And it's policy. This is not, this is not Title X cleanup. This is raising policy issues to recommend to city council that they change the code.
So, we're okay with doing that next then?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
And, and it's, and it's independent of a general cleanup, which has to do with references to, to repealed paragraphs or incorrect references or typos or, or things like that, which.
It would also be helpful if we had the zoning map with our, our packet too.
Yeah. We have often, Sheri has often put a zoning map in the back of the packet.
Oh, she got it. I guess I.
And, and it's, it's not clear to me.
Yeah, I don't have one this time.
How, how well all the colors are being reproduced. I, I'm lucky enough to have a twenty-seven inch screen at my desktop. So, I can make, I can, I can make that in a twenty-seven inch screen and I can get right down to the parcel level. But I'm still not clear on the color perception. So. And I think this would be a big help to staff if we could look through these tables and say, this doesn't make sense to me. Good. Good. I would, I would recommend making a list. And if you want to send a list to, uh, to Suzanne, I guess, 'cause she's the one that's in charge of this cleanup. Then you can either do that or we can, or we can just come back and, and discuss them. But having, having a list is gonna be really helpful to staff because they can say, okay, three people found this. We don't need to, to, uh, go back and, and discuss it three times.
I have a.
Right. Yeah.
Question and comment, or maybe a comment and question. I'm looking at, um.
Both welcome.
Table two-six, the crop production and horticulture in agriculture in open spaces. So, is there anywhere where, what type of crop is distinguished in specific areas?
I think Alex, Alex may look up crop production now and see.
Is that something we look at? Like, if it's a crop that needs heavily sprayed and it's right next to a residential area?
Or a school.
Are those in consideration? So, there's a, a list that distinguishes?
Crop means only certain crops?
Yeah, certain crop, yeah. There's, there's, there's the distinction of what crops where and.
Because there's this big discussion in the, in the unincorporated county right now about industrial hemp.
Well, and that's only one of them. Someone might, might, someone might put in some kind of a, you know, harvest, harvest, harvestable crop that you ingest. Like, I don't know, some fruit tree or something that needs heavy spraying, but it's right next door to a school. You know, is that a CUP or permit?
Citrus grove.
Is, I got it, but I'm trying not to be specific in my conversation because I'm trying to be somewhat apolitical here.
The hemp one, just for the record, uh, 'cause it's actually gonna be on the council agenda on Tuesday too, is that's, the city, uh, believes that's prohibited through our cannabis, uh, regulations. But if there's any ambiguity, we are going to clarify that on Tuesday.
That would be great because.
Right. So, I wasn't referring necessarily to that, but I know that's happening and I'm, I'm very aware of that conversation. But just overall, overall in general, is there, my question was about just, is there distinctions amongst what crops can be grown where and how and their proximity to other zones and like that? And do we break it down?
That would be in ten-two thirty-six oh-two, I guess. Is that right, Alex?
Yeah. And in this, in that section, it's not very specific. It says agricultural field and orchard uses include production of A, filled crops, B, flowers and seeds, C, fruits, D, grains, E, melons, F, ornamental crops, G, tree, tree nuts, H, tree and sod, and I, vegetables. So, it doesn't get into specific, you know, very specific levels.
It doesn't mention proximity, but that might be elsewhere in the code.
The.
Minimal area. But, but still, we have some. We have some.
We got that hillside.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I guess my question stems from being in.
Open space.
Being in integrity.
Oh, that's, uh, something else. It's.
That's the M.
Yeah. IR1, I think. No. IR3, maybe.
So, yeah, I see the agricultural zones are, are pretty small. I guess, I guess my question stems from, um, being in integrity with what council's coming forward with, with their declaration of climate change emergency and then farming practices that may be in alignment with that or not in alignment that and how we're gonna address that. So, we are as a whole in integrity with where council wants to go and then the current agricultural practices that might not be. And then how do we look at certain crops? You know, I get within those, within those zoning areas that are commercial horticulture and agriculture. 'Cause if someone wanted to put in a commercial, start growing commercial flowers, well, that's one of the heaviest sprayed pesticide crops in the entire world.
But it could be not. It might not be.
But it might not be.
Yeah.
But how do we, we don't have any, um, way to evaluate that, really.
Right. Nor do we have an ordinance that says you can only or not spray certain pesticides.
Right.
So, for instance, you may see that on the ag land and potentially like a one acre parcel could have fruit trees and it's in residential and it's just for residential use and they can be spraying pesticides. I mean, so. But it is something to look at and I hear what you're saying. Yeah. So, it sounds, it sounds almost like more code type.
Alex, back in that, in that entry on crop, um, does it say including? Because I seem to recall somewhere in the code, it says including means including but not limited to. In, in which case, uh, one could argue that any crop is okay there.
Uh, well, I.
That's otherwise legal.
Right. So, it says, it says commercial agricultural field and orchard use, uses, including production of. And then at the end, it says also includes associated crop preparation services and harvesting activities.
Sure.
And.
I, I was thinking there was somewhere else in the code where it says including means including but not limited to.
I think that's correct.
And so, this is something that I hope staff will, will find. I don't, I've, I remember reading it, but I don't remember where. But that's something that, that should be considered by city council because included, including but not limited to could mean that somebody could come in and, and apply to have an industrial hemp farm in those two dark green areas. And it's not clear that we want that. And so, it may require a change to say except.
Yeah.
And, uh, oh, I also read an article just recently, this past week, that said, a lot of the marijuana arrests and jails or prison sentences, um, may go by the boards because law enforcement laboratories do not have either a testing method or a standard on THC content in material, whatever, whatever the material is, to establish whether something is in the marijuana category or in the industrial hemp category. Now, maybe with the legalization of recreational use by the state, all of those people are out of jail anyway. I don't know. But it, it means if, if they find five pounds of stuff that looks like hemp or marijuana or something in that family in your car, it's not at all clear that you can be charged with anything because they can't establish what it is, which I thought was kind of an interesting quandary for the law enforcement folks. We ought to ask Chief Freihoff sometime what his, what his feeling is about that. Have, have we done enough on this topic? Or would you like to discuss it some more? Or just take your homework assignment and go look at those tables and see if there's anything that doesn't make sense to you?
Well, so basically tonight, tonight was a kind of an introduction to this process.
I think we should continue this issue.
And, um, yeah, I, I pretty much went through my, I need to do a little bit more. So, I would be happy to take mine back and do another round and then come back next time. Is that what we're saying? so I would be happy to take mine back and do another round, and then come back next time, is that what we're saying?
I think that would be good, I, I think that's what staff is hoping to get back from us, at least in part.
Yeah, our next meeting may be heavy, depending on if a couple of projects get done, so it may not be at the next meeting, but at an upcoming meeting.
But soon, yeah, coming up, okay.
Well, I was looking at the September fourth meeting, it says notices are due by two days ago.
Yeah, we, we, I got, I had somebody submit a project today, and they're, and we were going to see if we could get it done. We might not be able to, so.
That's, that's, that's quite a ways that you have to back off.
Yeah.
And, and I guess it's because we have a local weekly newspaper?
It's a week newspaper, yeah.
Would it, would it speed up the process to say that we'll submit it to the Ventura County Star, as well as the Ojai Valley News? And the Star being a daily paper? You know, it may not qualify being in the Ojai Valley News, but it would in the other one.
Yeah, we've talked about that, actually, a few times recently, and I, and I think, I don't want to speak for our city attorney's office, we got the opinion that it, that we legally could do it, you know, change, change over to the Star. The question that I'm, I guess, struggling with is the, you know, the appearance to the public, and if we always put our notices in the Ojai Valley News, and then this, this project we put in the Star and not the Ojai Valley News, there's always a perception that we wrestle with of like, are we trying to sneak something?
Trying to hide something, sure.
Yeah, so I try not to do it, i- if at all possible.
And I'm not sure what the cost of, of putting the notices in either.
That's true, too.
I don't want the, the city to spend a lot of money unnecessarily. But if you put it in both, I would even wager, and I, Bob Daddy, if you're listening, I don't mean any offense, I suspect there are more people in town who read the Star than read the Ojai Valley News, but I don't know that. I frankly, I read both myself, and you get very different coverages in the two, which, which I think they're complimentary and, and a good thing to have. But we might be able to speed up the process that way. So, what it costs to actually put something in the Star.
And, and just to clarify, I know we've looked at this in other instances, too, and the law only requires that we publish in a paper of general circulation, so that can be either paper.
Both would qualify, I would think, yeah.
And, but I, I, so I don't know what the rule is for, for either paper, but I know some papers only accept notices. So, if you want to publish notice, you have to submit it by a certain date. And that's generally like, it could be, you know, three days to a week before, when it actually gets published. Also, sometimes they only accept it, depending on the paper, I've seen it only accepted on like Tuesdays. So, if you don't get it in by Tuesday-
For Friday's paper, yeah.
For Friday's paper.
Yeah.
So, if you don't get it in by Tuesday, it's, it's not, it's not getting in there, so.
And that Friday has to be ten days before the Wednesday meeting, something like that, I think is-
Yes.
Yeah, so you're really backing off a little more than two weeks.
Probably about fifteen days, yeah.
So, so the distinction, my only point is distinction between a weekly paper and a daily paper may not matter, depending on when you actually get it to the paper.
Yeah. But it, once again, depending on the cost to the city, it might be a good thing to just do both, and that leaves you the flexibility, for example, to deal next meeting with this applicant that came in today. Oh, the, the posting is a cost to the applicant, okay. And I have no idea what it is, so.
I don't know for the Star offhand.
An eighth of a page or something like that you have to put in?
Yeah.
Oh, just-
It depends on, yeah, depends on what we're noticing, yeah.
Okay, anyway, something to consider. That would, that would maybe allow us to get more cases coming through and, and, and help us that way. All right, I think we all have, we have our assignments. Let's move on to item three, proposed topics to discuss at the September tenth joint meeting with the city council. And we'll keep our fingers crossed that we don't have something interrupt that schedule this time. I don't remember what it was that kept us from having the last joint meeting, but it was-
We missed two of them, actually. But anyway, we, here we are.
These, these three items are things that we had previously decided we wanted to talk about. Are those still, you think, the, the top three that we want to talk with the city council about? Or would you like to put something else in, in place of one of those?
Well, number one is more than one topic. Yes?
Yes. But it really comes down to saying, whatever it is you guys are going to do, what's our role in it?
Sure.
Oh, so that, that was my question, it's like, um-
The question is really at the end of that statement, yeah.
What is the role of the planning commission? Related to-
To the general plan update. So, the, at that time, the commission had talked about wanting to hear from the council, what, what role it was going to be, what outreach meetings that were going to be, and then a couple of specific questions related to the general-
What do you want us to do, and when do you want us to do it?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's probably still our, our number one topic.
Yeah, because it is coming up.
Oh, we hope so.
Some point, soon.
Well, I, oops, I have a request, actually, or I see, I've been, I've been, I've talked about this a couple of times, but I think that really, I mean, I'd like to talk about establishing a work program for the planning department.
A work program?
A work program for the planning department. And that's, that's where you put these things like the, the code cleanup, or the, the use, evaluation of uses and require, and, and use permit, and use permit requirements, or we, or the tree ordinance, or, which is a pet project of mine, or-
An update of the tree ordinance?
Yeah, or, or update of definitions, or, I mean, that may be, that's probably associated with the, the use permit requirement thing. But there's all these, these special projects, and, and until you identify what those projects are, and you, you give them, and council gives them a priority, nobody, there's, there's no way to organize, you know, a, a logical approach to this, plus an allocation of staff resources. And really, and so, so, you know, that should be part of, I mean, handling special projects is part of what the planning commission does, in addition to development review. And so, but unless you actually have an identified list, okay, and these are the things we really want to work on this year, next year, whatever, I just, yeah, go ahead, Kathy.
I was just going to say, I'm in complete agreement, I don't know that I'm seeing it, but we had that wrote, is it in our packet? The, we had that planning commission list, but it was just a list, and it wasn't a work program. So, in other words, it, it just kept rotating, I don't even know if it's in here tonight, maybe we're not getting it anymore.
It's on, it's on the third page under tab four.
I mean, it should be-
Oh, there it is, yeah.
Question items suggested by the PC.
Yeah, but in other words, these are here, but there's no program to say, "We're going to do this one next, and we want to plead it by a certain date," so that we can keep going through this.
Or council blessing, yeah, these are, these are, this are the, these are the things we really want staff to prioritize, and the commission to prioritize, so.
Maybe we, what we could do is at a future meeting soon, look at the list, maybe we need to re-discuss it. This has been here for a while, maybe some things don't belong, or they're, maybe they do, but that might be a good place to start.
Well, just back under tab three, this list of three things, I, I feel like number three, water for fire suppression, was something I pushed particularly hard on. And I have, in the interim, and I don't remember, frankly, how long ago it was we put this list together, I have spent time talking with the fire department and with Casitas Water District, and I have come to the point where I'm satisfied that, that the issue of, and, and with our own planning department, I'm satisfied that the issue of water for fire suppression will have been covered in any particular project that comes before the commission, before it gets here.
Oh, good, good.
So, maybe we can strike that then.
And I think we could, I think we could easily strike number three, unless someone else has an aspect of that that they want to go after. But it, it, it was an impenetrable mess to me, and, and I feel like it's much clearer now, and most new developments are going to require sprinklers, because the water folks can't supply enough water for fire suppression, but you can cut the requirement in half by putting in sprinklers.
But then, don't the sprinklers take pressure away from the hydrant?
Well, yes, any, any use of water-
Will take pressure away from the hydrant.
In that line is going to take pressure away from the hydrant, that's true. But it's in the code, or it's in the state law, or something, that, that, and I don't want to start quoting numbers, but there's a, there's a standard for how much water flow for how long you have to provide to be safe. But you can cut that requirement in half by putting in sprinklers. The idea being that it's going to keep the fire from getting too big.
For new development.
For new development, yes, right.
So, what about all the neighborhoods that don't have-
There's, there's no, there's no retrofit provision in that.
Right, but is there a plan to increase water pressure? Because I know that was an issue.
Yes, in fact, as I was wandering around the city today, I do a lot of that, I saw a Casitas crew with six-inch white pipes. They're putting in new water lines in lots of places, trying to stay ahead of Greg Grant and his paving program. They, they did that on our street last, last year or the year before. They came in and put in a new six-inch line in place of the old four-inch line, which means a little over twice the capacity, just before the paving happened. So, that was a good thing.
I think they're doing it on, on Summer, aren't they, Street now?
I think it was Summer Street that I saw them, yeah, I was walking in that area this morning. Anyway-
So, I think we can strike that.
I think we could strike item three, what else would you want to put in there?
Well, what Kathy was just speaking about, if we could-
The work program would be number three.
Work program.
Okay, yeah, and, and-
And then other projects of mine would be sub, I mean, that would be subordinate to that. If we can talk about doing a work program, then-
Special, special projects for the planning department.
Yeah, right, right.
Okay, is that agreeable to everyone to put in that as, keeping in mind that if we start in on number one, we may use the hour on that.
Right, right.
But even so, it would be good to have council know what we're interested in talking about. And of course, I think we all understand that all we can do is recommend that council direct Mr. Vega to direct staff to go do something. We can, we can say please, but that's all we can do.
That, that was going to be the one point I was going to make, and I, I know where, I think where the concern has been and where, where it's coming from, so I understand it, but my expectation on, you know, our next community development director would be that they would develop and prepare a, a solid work program, so, you know, I'll just think that way.
And I think all we're talking about here is just saying, "These are some things that we would suggest be put into a work program."
Right, right.
Is that-
Yeah, yeah.
But are we not talking about parking anymore? Well, that was on our list.
But it's not on this one.
Well, if you go back to, now it's on that list.
Oh, on the list for the council meeting, is that what you're saying?
Oh, I see what you're saying, I'm sorry, yeah, I know it is on-
Parking and parking and Luffy.
Yeah, that's on our planning commission-
Right.
Discussion item list, which essentially could be the-
I mean, under general plan, the actual desire to have affordable housing and encourage that, and also to approach how we deal with parking in the city seem to be two huge things that should go under that. I just have a question, because I thought council established a, a subcommittee or a citizens committee to talk, to look at downtown parking? But that's only part of the, I mean, you're talking about the entire parking requirements for everything, I think, or- Parking requirements, and then how we're going to deal with, you know, possible external, other parking locations to take the pressure off of the individual businesses where it's not really, they don't really have the ability to add parking. And then everybody comes in and says, "Well, nobody else has it, so you can't make me do it, because that's not fair." And then it winds up going round and round and round, so, you know, let's, let's-
We have done that once, and we've all taken a lot of grief.
And then the in-lu parking fee, which maybe isn't, isn't the right fee. And maybe it needs to be looked at in terms of how that's done, so that there is money for other parking spaces. And then maybe we expand the trolley for shuttle service, and we start charging minimally, but charging for parking to help make this work. I mean, I think, you know, that is really critical to how traffic flows in your town. Right now, traffic doesn't flow very well in our town. We have heavy traffic on one street, there's no traffic anywhere else. If you go off the main street, it's not a problem, but man, Ojai Avenue is like, can be a beast, and-
Fifty years ago, there was a, a proposal before the city council to make Ojai Avenue one-way, and something else one-way, probably Matilahaw.
Yes, and have actual good, good bike lanes, get the parking off of that street, and put it elsewhere, and make, make the town traffic work well, and make it, make it pedestrian-friendly, which it sure isn't right now. Right now, it's so car-focused, that when you try and walk from one place to another, you just get angry. I mean, you know, it's like basic things, like where the crosswalk is on Ojai Avenue, and then you go to enter the library, and the entrances for the pedestrians are totally at the opposite ends from where the crosswalk is. Like, there's, everywhere you go, there's problems like that, and then-
Crosswalk is at the intersection, not at the entrance to the library.
But that's where it needs to be.
I think so.
Well, yes, it does, so maybe, you know, the library needs to make a, make it more pedestrian-friendly. And then if you go into the, some of the buildings a little bit further down on Ojai Avenue, you take your life in your hand to get across the street. So, how mu-
That's where we have complete streets, sorry.
What's actually the direction for this committee that the council established?
The parking committee is going to be focused on immediate fixes to specific parking concerns, namely being how we can better identify existing parking lots through signage improvements and things like that, and then identifying the need for additional parking, or changes to curb striping, or things like that. So, that's what we're looking at, and it is focused on mostly the, you know, the downtown, and the first couple of meetings we've had are focused specifically on Montgomery Street.
Maybe, maybe we should have four things, and hope we can get to them. Hope that we'll get something quick out of city council in response to number one, and put automobile and bicycle parking as an issue, and special planning projects as an issue. Yes, dear, I'm sorry, Kathy.
That's right, you can call me dear, that's okay.
I like everybody here.
I know. So, we do have a complete streets committee under the planning commission, and Steve Colsey and I are both on that committee, chair and co-chair. Turn my speaker on. And so, complete streets is about, it was a state mandate.
Chair and helper.
Yeah, well, you're, you are the co-chair. Complete streets is about making the public right-of-way, which includes like sidewalks, roads, et cetera, safe and accessible for everyone, so it includes pedestrian, bicycle, all kinds of vehicles, potentially, you know, street trees, could be stormwater capture, could be public art. But basically, that's what we deal with, and I wanted to say that, right now, our committee is doing a map with- And I wanted to say that right now, our committee is doing a map with, and we've already done a lot of the legwork, identifying on the map parking and what have you. And that includes bicycle parking and vehicle parking. So I don't know if that's, if that needs to come up here or not.
Well, I think, I think that again, it starts with a big picture desire. And I think the complete streets thing has been going on for seven years. Is that a really long time?
Master plan was approved a couple of years ago.
Right, but the state mandate, I believe, was 2009 or 10. And then we, they, I mean, that's when the state mandated that-
All right, so it's nine years. And what I'm saying is that we need to have a goal, a specific goal, and, and not be so, and before you can get anything accomplished, you need to have a real strong goal. Do we want that street to be pedestrian friendly? How are we going to do that? I, I just think that, that we get so mired down in minutia that nothing moves along. And I've lived here since 2009 and nothing's changed as far as I can tell.
I'll comment.
And I don't mean, this is not-
No, no, I have a positive response.
I'm sure that your, that your plan is, is fine, but where are we going with it? Is my, is my goal. And I would like to make another comment along this line, which is last year, the city manager identified forty-three priority topics for the city council. How about this year, we have four and we really do them? Four, because it's unrealistic to have forty-three priority topics and expect to get anything done. So let's, let's really try and streamline what we're doing here and, and let's try and, and do something where we can feel like we've made an accomplishment this year. That's what I would like to see.
So just in response, so what we have done and what was initially acquired is we helped write the policy for the city. You have to start there, which got approved by city council. Then we took, we went around, we've gathered data all throughout the city, which we shared with some consultants who have worked with the city. But we also completed a master plan that was adopted by the city council. And because we had the policy and the master plan and we have an ongoing complete streets committee, our public works department applied for a large active transportation grant that we got, and that's in the planning process. It takes a while. We have to deal with Caltrans, but it is going to be, I believe-
We also got a, we also got a second-
And so that's for the area of Nordoff and that's the area by Whispering Pines. But what, what I'm saying is what, let's, let's look at downtown next.
Well, that actually is part of the grant.
TP covers all of Highway thirty-three and one fifty inside the city limits.
One fifty all the way to Gridley. So basically Gridley to the Y and the Y to El Rovol. So you're going to have continuous pedestrian access, which is great because we don't have that right now. Bicycle accessibility, it's going to vary depending on the width of the streets, but that's part of the project and street tree planning too. So it's really exciting, actually.
And we've got an additional grant that has been going into some of the pedestrian crossings over by Nordoff. That was a county transportation commission grant or something.
Right, and also they did the, these are the rapid flashing beacons.
Right.
So originally, we had the one at the library. And so now we have the ones over by, on the thirty-three by Nordoff. And then we also have the one at Park and Whispering Oak and at Cunyatta.
Okay.
So I know it does take a while, but things are in process.
Right, and, and then, you know, but we still haven't changed the fact that we've got cars parked all the way down the street. We've got parking going in two directions. Yeah, the flashing lights go on and you can cross the street. It still doesn't feel like, I mean, when you, when you go on State Street, there's traffic on it, you can't park on it, and the light stops a lot. You know the pedestrian is the priority on that street. I'd like Ojai Avenue to feel like that too in the downtown area.
If you're, if you're going to drive in Santa Barbara, you know to stay off of State Street.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You know, I think that, that I would like to really define, and maybe that's not what Ojai wants, and that's fine, but at least let's look at it and let's define what it is that we want it to feel like on our main street. I'd like, for me, that's sort of the topic. If everybody just wants to be able to park wherever they want, pull their truck up in front of every store and pick up whatever they want, that's fine. If we want to identify parking areas and really try and make a statement that this is going to be a pedestrian and bike friendly town and we're going to make it harder for you to drive through town, that's a statement. But one way or the other, what I want's kind of irrelevant, but, but we should have that, a statement of where we want to go.
In Santa Barbara, you've got major streets on either side of State Street that parallel it and allow that traffic to move over there. And, and we don't have that, which makes the-
We do have streets that parallel Ojai Avenue.
We have Matilahaw that parallels it
Eliso.
And Eliso for a portion of the downtown area. But neither, neither one goes past Foothill and neither one goes, well, Eliso goes just past Montgomery.
Right, but that is the main downtown core at this point.
I would hate to see traffic diverted onto Matilahaw Avenue, given how narrow it is.
And I, yeah, I walk there, but it's dangerous now.
It's a state highway. The one fifty and the thirty-three are both state highways. And so Caltrans-
I understand all that. I do understand all that.
So there's things that you, the city can do and there's things they can't do, and I'm sure Mr. Vega will spend on that.
But, you know, if we at least define how we want it, what, what we as a city want it to be like, I mean, it's easy to say, well, you know, we can't do anything because-
You could look at our policy, which has a really good, nice description in it and the master plan. There are maps and they're in good descriptions in there. But that's probably a good place to start to, to read both of those.
Ray?
Oh, I was just going to say, you know, that this, this is a, an important, poignant conversation and it came out of what to speak at, at the joint meeting. So I'm, I'm wanting to focus back on where we feel this fits in in a joint meeting as a, is it a separate topic? Is it priority enough to request speaking about that at the joint meeting or these, the work program, this general plan update with what's the role of the planning commission and considering global warming as a topic related to the general plan? And what I wanted to say about that is because we have, there's been so much community input into the Ventura County general plan, there's lots of documents and languaging to kind of draw from that are, that has already been done and I think it applies to the city that can be brought forward. So that's a conversation that's, that's ripe and well on its way.
Is, is the, the city staff, has somebody that's keeping up on the, the county general plan update so that we know what, what's coming?
Yeah, it's me. It's me. I'm also working on the-
That's your fourth hat?
Yeah, and I'm working on the city's general plan update too, trying to get that going. So by the tenth, I should have a, a good update on it.
Oh, wait, what is the status?
So the status was, you know, there, there was obviously gaps in some things. So back in, I think it was September, we released, September of last year, we released an RFQ and then it had not really moved, so about, well, when I got neighbors-
Not much response to the RFQ?
So we got two responses.
Okay.
Yeah, and so when I was appointed city manager, I started meeting with the two of them and I have requested that each provide a scope, a thorough scope to us. And then I'm, the plan is to take it to council, but I think it's going to be probably the meeting after this. It's, I was trying to get it done and try to hope that everything tied out, but it'll probably be September twenty-fourth because their due date right now is September tenth.
And you've been tracking what's happening with the Ventura County one?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they're getting so much input from community experts in the field on global warming.
Yeah.
Giving input and languaging there.
Yeah, there, there's a lot going on right now because we also have the SCAG-RANA numbers coming in and we also have the census coming up. And just, you know, not to get pity, but the planning department, as far as actual, you know, planning work is Suzanne and myself, basically. So it's, it's a challenge.
One other thing-
Yeah.
And we, we should keep in mind that we are going to have one more meeting before the September tenth joint meeting. And, and so I, I throw out a suggestion. We're, we're down to two topics here. We took out water for fire suppression. I wonder if we might, pardon?
Don't we have three? The general plan and then the affordable housing and then the creative work program?
Okay, I was going to say, we, we have, call it special planning projects or something like that, that we would like to see done. And then maybe a fourth topic being vehicle and bicycle parking and as, as it, and the city's long-term vision for that.
Right, because just recently, we've, you know, Xed out any number of projects based on parking as it is now.
Yeah.
And, and if we change that view of parking, then perhaps we could have gotten those twenty-eight rental units or whatever. And I just think that, that we need to really start to think outside the box a little bit.
Well, then I, I would, I would humbly suggest we add both of those topics and have four.
So have we ever gotten through four topics at a joint?
No, no. But I, I think it, I think if, if we have a short list, three or four things, that it may at least give the city council an understanding of what's important to the commission.
Okay.
And no, we've, we've never gotten through three, much less four. I'm not sure we've ever gotten through two.
But it's not bad to have them on the pair.
But I think it would be good to put both of those in. So if we said number three was special planning projects, was, is that an acceptable topic name? And number four would be vehicle and bicycle parking? And the city's long-term vision for that? Or, and the council's long-term vision for that? Is that?
I mean, some of that is-
The words are-
General, kind of bleeds into the general plan too.
Yeah.
And, I mean, that may be the comment we get back, but I think, you know, we keep bumping up against the, the problems with parking, so.
Some of the-
And the lack of bicycle parking in particular, so.
And, and in the affordable housing topic, some of that is being discussed right now with Kathy and I on the sustainability and resilience committee in terms of how to approach that and land use and-
And along those lines, and maybe, maybe James or Alex can, can tell us if the rumor I heard is true, and that is that the roughly two acre parcel in the rear of the Condor self-storage over on Bryant Street that has been carried for some time now as an affordable housing parcel is now being considered at the owner's request for additional Condor self-storage instead. Is, I don't know if that's, has, has, has the planning window seen that come through or? Oh, it got submitted yesterday. Okay, well, I mean, not that there's any legal ramifications for us with that, but just to let people know that I think there were only six or seven parcels in the city that were identified for affordable housing. That was one of them. And, and the, the application is to take that off the list in effect.
And, and I will say, we do have a couple of applications slash discussions ongoing on affordable housing projects, so that would also be, you know, a good thing we can cover there.
There's the city property on Franklin, sure.
And then we also recently have had some discussions that by this time, we might be able to talk more about, of, with some groups that are interested in new, you know, putting the, trying to get the SPL overlay on new sites. So it would be maybe a chance to talk about, you know, our vision for, for that too throughout the city.
Once again, something for us to analyze and recommend and city council to make a decision because it's, it's going to be a zoning change.
If, if, if the city council really wants, if the town really wants affordable housing as opposed to just a soundbite because the state's saying we need to do it, I'm not convinced the city really wants affordable housing. I would like to see affordable housing and I think it will help solve some of our problems that we have where everybody says all the, all the uses are tourist driven. Well, if we had more people here, there would be more reason to have services for people who live here. And even at affordable housing, we've seen, looking at that chart from the last project, this is not poverty housing. This is, this is, you know, housing for people who have a substantial, but not a ridiculous income. It's, you know, high for some of us.
Inflation has made all the numbers big.
Exactly, exactly. You know, a family of four with eighty thousand dollars. I mean, I don't have that. You know, I got a lot of people in my house, but we don't have that. And, and so, you know, again, it's a question of, do we really want it? And if we really want it, how do we make it happen? Because I think that, that the incentives that you can offer can make it attractive enough to somebody to come in. And there are developers who specialize in affordable housing projects and they do lots of them. There's lots of them, Santa Barbara and surrounding-
The main incentive is the density bonus.
And you need to give it.
Well, it's in, it's in the code right now
Yes.
That if you do certain things, you get the density bonus.
So, you know, the question is how badly does the city want it?
It ties into some of the other things too, like parking. It seems like every affordable housing project we have right now, the first question we ask is how many units to how many parking spots? And, you know, I think there's going to be a question of, do we want to give some of that up to get some more units or not? And there's probably three, three relatively large projects right now where that's a key question, whether they're going to move forward.
Because the code says in general, two to two and a half parking spaces per residence. And that's a lot of space.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
That's a lot. I mean, it's like, you know, a project where the units are small, it's inappropriate to allow two and a half parking spaces per unit of that size.
Well, if, if, if it's affordable housing and it turns out that, that it's occupied by people who work here, there may be a lot less driving.
Absolutely.
Yeah. On the other hand, there are some questions of whether or not, because part of the code right now says, in the, in the affordable housing, part of the code in ten-two, it talks about priority in affordable housing being, one, people who work in the city but don't live in the city. And two, income figures, because affordable is a legal term. And it's not clear to me, and Alex may want to chime in on this, it's not clear to me that you can discriminate in housing, whether you're a private person or a city in terms of where people currently live or where they work. You can discriminate on the basis of finances, but I don't think you can on the basis of where someone lives or where they work. Is that, do you know?
So is, is your question, can you discriminate? Like so, so are you saying not rent to someone or sell to someone based on where they work?
Based on where they work or based on where they currently live and want to live in this space instead?
Like having a residency requirement for affordable housing? Is that, that's what you're?
Well, if, if, if somebody moves into affordable housing, they've become a resident.
That's true.
But-
To be eligible for-
To be eligible for it, you have to live outside the city. Not clear to me that's legal.
Yeah, we, I'd, I'd have to look into it just off the top of my head.
And to work in the city but live outside the city may be doubly not proper. And to work in the city but live outside the city may be doubly not proper.
Yeah. So we, we are, we're, so if we create a group like that, generally you have the protected classes. That's not one of the protected classes. Protected classes, of course, being race, religion, gender, stuff like that.
And economic factors becomes a, a protection of sorts.
And so if you do create another group like that, it's my understanding, and I have to double check this, but the city can do it, someone can bring a lawsuit claiming they're being discriminated against. But if they do, the, there's a rational basis test so that the city just needs to articulate a rational basis for doing so, is my understanding. But before I say that conclusively, let me confirm and I can get back to you on this point.
Okay.
And just as an update, if, if the, of course, I just, if the city was interested in going down that path, the, the legislator just, the governor just signed AB 101, which is a housing trailer, trailer bill, allocated about $600 million for affordable housing. A lot of that is available to cities too, just as an FYI.
AB 101. Have to look that one up. Okay. Well, we ran kind of far afield in terms of proposed topics. Are we, are we okay with those, that list of four though? Okay. Good. Let's move on to item four. Planning Commission tentative agenda. We'll wait and see if, if, well, oh, 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 oh. We never, we never decided to continue the topic of delving more into Title 10. Do we have to do that? It's just a discussion item? Okay.
Yeah, no, we don't.
Okay. So we can just have Title 10 is still a discussion item on, on September 4th?
Yeah, I do think there'll be at least a couple of chapters worth of cleanup we can, we can discuss. Well.
Okay.
You would know better than me, but it sounds like it.
Well, I, I know what Susan and Suzanne and I have discussed, but the process is we're both looking at, at incongruities or whatever in the code. And when we have, we've got two lists now. Resolved things where we both agree this change should be made and unresolved, which we keep coming back to. The resolved items, I think Suzanne is, is, when she has the time, because it's a laborious process, is going back to a Word version of the code. If you go to the website, it's all PDF, can't be modified. But she's going to a Word version of the code and making those changes as suggestions where you have underlined for added words and strike through for deleted words. And it's simple to say and laborious to, to execute. So it's hard to tell how, how quickly all that'll be done because it's hardly the only thing she has to do. So new items might be, depending on the noticing, we might have a new item for September 4th. That would be good. And then we can continue to talk about topics for the city council if we want to make any change to the list of four. Or, or we can, we can talk about things within that list of four that each, each of us or all of us may want to emphasize as we talk to the council.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see, see us when there's a, an open date like that where there isn't anything specific on it and something may come forward to look at from the community or from council. But I would like to see us have some predetermination on things we want to talk a lot, like we just put, okay, Title 10, we'll go on there. So what else is a priority for us to speak about? Not, not in such a casual manner, but like agendize if there isn't any other project coming forward.
And we could put, for example, on, on every one of our meetings, we could have a discussion item that covers, that, that says, okay, what do we want to do about these discussion items that we've suggested? Do we want to put something together and send it forward to council?
If that's what we're asking council, when we have our joint session, right? We're going to ask them, basically what we were saying earlier, if I understood.
Yeah, but the joint session's on September, what, 10? And this is a September 4 meeting.
We can send forward recommendations to the council anytime that we choose to.
Oh, in addition to creating a special planning projects and work program, which we had earlier said would come potentially from that planning commission list?
Yes.
But you're, I think what you're saying is start it before it goes to council?
Right. These, these topics that are discussion items suggested by the PC, we could pick up any one of those and discuss it at one of our meetings, I think rather productively if we choose to.
Yeah, I just want to use our time wisely and not all come together.
And then say, okay.
Sounds like the same.
It is, it is much the same thing, but it covers other topics too.
Well, no, well, maybe I misunderstood.
Well, maybe.
When we talked about this earlier, the, for creating a work program or a special planning projects.
That, that could be the tree ordinance, it could be.
Right. We referred to this list and then we said, oh.
Parking, yeah.
We get to re, go ahead, maybe in our next meeting, review this. Maybe there's something we take off, maybe we need to add things. And then we could prioritize. And then as Ray said, you know, if the city council says fine, then we start going through the list, but we could prioritize it too.
Yeah, drafting the work, coming up with the draft work program. I mean, I think it's, like you said, when he, when we get a, a community development manager, it would be appropriate for them to kind of take the draft and, and finalize it.
Really what we're saying, I think, is this is an area that is important to the planning commission. Is it important to the city council?
Right, right.
That's a, that's a very normal and responsible thing for us to say.
Can't really work on things that the council has no interest in.
Right.
Or doesn't, yeah, wants a different direction. So, yeah, we need to be on the same page.
So, so what I was requesting, got a little lost in the shuffle here, but it's, it's, what, all you're saying is valid, is on September 4th that we request something to be agendized. Now, what I, am I, is what I'm hearing is if there's no other projects coming forward to us that along with talking further about Title 10, we want to talk about the special project planning, the work program?
Any, any of the topics that I think we, we should.
So we'll just fill it in that night.
Flesh out this list of four and then cover other things if we, if we feel like taking the time to do that.
Got it. So we'll decide on September 4th is what I'm hearing versus now. I got it.
Well, I think, I think this is a reasonable list of four, but it, it's, it's not a detailed list. And so we may want to talk about.
That in addition to this.
In addition to this. And, and the things on the back, on, on the last page under tab four are, are not things, unless they're already on this list of four, they're not things to bring up at the September 10th meeting. But they may be things that we want to just send a missive forward and say, this is important to us. Do you think we ought to work on it?
Housing looks the most fleshed out. There's four asterisk points there.
Yes.
You're going to be asking them about that already.
Okay.
I just, I just have a quick question. And I don't know if James can, can, I don't know if you're up to speed on this. And so on the hedges, fences and walls, it, the, under items pending city council, it says, let's see, 2619, PC reviewed, requested more information. But then it's going, but now it's 91019, there is a city council review. So I, I, that's what I remember is that we weren't finished, except maybe with the safety section.
So there's a missing date in there and you can see it on the left where it says date of PC action, June 5th, 2019. It came back to PC on June 5th.
We made recommendations.
And there were recommendations.
And the city council basically said, I don't like your recommendations.
Did we finish our, we finished our review?
So I think you and Luke discussed this after, afterwards where maybe there was something lost in, in the shuffle. But he, so he had taken a, an item to council with, with recommendations from PC. And I, I did double check the minutes. It looked like they matched up, but, you know, I wasn't at that meeting.
I thought it was coming back to us, you know, with, with actual written language, legislative format, so we could see it. So we've never seen that.
Okay. They, it went to council on the, there's, there's, there's some missing steps here. It went to council, August.
On the 9th. It was July 9th.
July. It was the last meeting before the summer recess.
Oh, but it's going to council in September.
Because, so it went to council.
And it's continued.
And council chose three of, if I remember right, there's seven recommendations. Council chose three and said, start on those right away. Those are priorities. And then come back, we'll come back and talk about the other four.
Okay.
So the one that jumps, jumps out to me, I don't remember all of them off the top of my head, but the, the no cost, no or low cost permit for just a standard.
For any kind of fence.
Any kind of fence. We all agreed that's a good idea. So that's coming back. And then there were two other ones that, two other recommendations that they asked for us to draft something and come back to them with. So what, what we could do, we could try to, when we come back to do those, we could note that the planning commission is interested in looking at the other issues.
Or issues, right.
Yeah. So we, we can try to figure out a way to do that.
And then the big fight was on the setback issue.
The setback issue.
I wasn't up to speed on that, what happened. So I apologize for that. But that would be, that's a topic that we could continue to talk about.
Yeah, yeah.
And.
I think we're planning on right now, we have it scheduled for the 24th, I think, to come back. So, but, but it's, it's something we can talk about. Or we could talk about the recommendations that weren't accepted at this time or something like that.
Right, just to get updated with that. So one other question, then the tiny village concept on 408 North Montgomery Street. So planning commission, I thought that was a concept review. I don't think we made any, we just, we just gave feedback. We didn't make recommendations to council that I am aware of.
It was a concept review?
Yeah.
I think you're correct. I think that got crossed, wires crossed with the, there was a tiny village concept discussion, and it was probably, what, June or July of last year even, 18. So I think maybe on the list, they just kind of got mixed. But, yeah, that was a concept review and my understanding is it's not going anywhere at this time.
One, one of the issues on the hedges, walls and fences regarding the setback issue in the front, I, I would like to talk about that again in, in this commission based on some observations I've made, some comments from Bill Wirick, and some ways to modify the all or nothing approach. I mean, I think the intention of the council is they don't want people to build a high, solid wall across the entire front of their property. But there are definitely steps between that and, you know, between nothing and everything. And there are a lot of possible modifications of that. If, as long as we know that's the intent of the ordinance, that a solid wall shouldn't go across the whole front, we still can talk about screening or walls that run perpendicular to the front of the house that there's just so many possibilities for nice designs. And Luke presented a number of them that under that way that ordinance is written are not legal. And I walk around town and see so many nice things people have done that are not, that don't, that aren't, you know, don't meet code. And I don't want to cross out the possibility of having nice designs and then wind up having all these chain link fences that, you know, meet the code but are horrible. So, you know, there has to be something in between. And I think unfortunately, you can't legislate every single instance. I think that's one of the things that, that Luke always said, and I think he's absolutely right in that you can't, you're never going to get every, so for me, it's really important to have the basic intent of that ordinance as the first sentence and not in legalese, but just in English. The intention is that, that, you know, no solid wall should run the entire length.
Frontage of a parcel.
Yes, however you want to say it. And that's the, that's the, that's the intent.
Although we have allowed a three-foot tall solid wall to go all, all the way across the frontage.
But that's, but we're talking about a higher one. Okay. But that, you know, that shouldn't mean that you can't build anything 60, until 60 feet back if that's where your house is, because I don't think that's right either. There has to be something in between. And so I think, I think I'd like to address that again.
Yeah. And if we do end up addressing it, I would still like to bring back the, looking at neighborhoods or districts, because a lot of that has to do with geography, where you're located.
Exactly, all of it. And you're absolutely right.
What's going on on the street? Is it a main street or a side street?
Right.
The volume of traffic and headlights. I mean, there's a lot of different factors that play into that.
Absolutely.
And I think that's still an important screen to, to apply.
Yes, that is.
Stay productively busy with this stuff.
Right. But, but, you know, starting from a simple point of view, let's at least address the big picture. This is what we don't want, but that, we don't want to throw out everything else.
Okay.
And then the ultimate hope is that we can do it.
That way.
But that may not happen. That may not happen.
It may not come back to us.
Right, exactly.
Okay, let's move on to, to tab five. We have no reports due today because of city council and MAC meetings having been canceled. We do have a couple of things upcoming for the next meeting. I'll be reporting on city council. And then we're done, other than.
Have a public announcement when you're ready to hear it.
I think we're at that point.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make this announcement probably one or two more times. But I just wanted to remind the public that on September 22nd, the United Nations International City of Peace Festival is happening in Libby Park. I'm one of the producers of it along with.
September 22nd?
Twenty-two, it's a Sunday.
Sunday, okay.
From 11:00 to 4:00 PM. So in alignment with Ohi being a declared international city of peace, and also in alignment with the city making the declaration of climate change emergency, we're expanding the, the scope of this year's International Day of Peace Festival because the United Nations theme this year is climate change action. So we are inviting a lot of exhibitors and speakers this year that will be speaking about climate change topics as well as peace builders and how those two topics combine into a healthy culture.
Okay. And let's not forget, we're all coming back on September 4th to talk about these tables of land use. So maybe you can put that as a discussion item, call it review of tables 24, 26, 28, and 210, I think it is. And see if we can, see if we can identify some anomalies.
Are you online?
Yeah.
Yes. If you, if you go to the city website, you know, there's a list of half a dozen things there and an arrow. If you hit the arrow, the next list of half a dozen things includes the municipal code. So, so you can look at it online. I find it a lot easier that way. All right. There being no evident business before the commission otherwise, I declare us adjourned at 8:11. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Steve.